Planning Commission for Monday, March 15th at 6:00 PM. And Wally, I don't know if you have a discussion item about the proposed constrained capital improvements plan?
We have Mr. Wheeler and Ms. O'Connell here.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Wally. We welcome this to CIP for 2022-26. So what I'd like to do is just kind of take a group, couple of things that we completed.
In this year, last planning commission that we attended, we spoke about the master infrastructure plan, which we call the MIP. We have completed that document. So part of the planning for this CCIP is take what the departments have identified and included it in our CCIP as well. So we want to make sure y'all aware of that tonight. Just a reminder of kind of what the CCIP is for the city and why it's so important to have the planning commission here to assist us. It helps us to build the facilities required to support the city's public service responsibilities, to improve financial planning by comparing needs with resources, estimating future bond uses and debt service, and identifying tax rate implications. It also is to establish priorities among projects that their limited available funds are used to the best advantage, to plan public facility construction and measure equipment purchase and coordinate timing with the public needs, and of course, to support the fiscal development objectives contained in approved city plans, which I just mentioned, the MIP, as well as the comprehensive plan that we've done on the Dan, Dan and Dixon while back. For our audience listed at home, the CCIP will be found on the website, so we'll make sure we'll have that link if anybody wishes to review that as well. So a couple of updates. We're excited, Picocin Middle School, I know last time we were here, y'all were excited to see that moving forward. Just wanted to update you. Now its budget's around 20 million to complete that renovation. They have the contractor in place. We did the final borrowing this week. We actually signed off on the bond documents tonight, so all the funding's in place to complete that project. I believe by January 2023, the middle school will be occupied. We also were able to include the turf field at the middle school. The turf field is about 11 years old, had some wear and tail. Due to the environment that we're in with interest rate, we were able to include this as a project for borrowing without increasing the tax rates. So within our tax constraints that we currently have, we were able to include the turf field middle school with this borrowing. So sometime by the next football season, we hope to have that football field on play for both our high school and our youth leagues. Another important factor is the high school gym. This has been a big facet for the super, prior superintendent plus the current superintendent. We were able to use CARES funding to facilitate that. Schools received a portion of CARES money from the federal government, the city as well, and then there was some money left over that schools had that we were able to reappropriate. So we're excited that when the schools has activities like volleyball, basketball, any sporting events, there's air conditioning as well as circulation to make sure the virus doesn't kind of linger in the gym. Do y'all have any questions on any of the school projects? Couple of the city projects that we're excited about, you know, with the CARES funding, we received the money and we wanted to make sure it was put to good use. One of the things, if y'all have visited our library, we have a self-checkout machine available to our patrons, so that's really exciting. We are also able to expand our fleet vehicles to ensure social distancing is available. And then one of the big things that I know Mr. Dever would appreciate is mobile data terminals within the police department. This allows our police officers to do the work in their squad versus having to go into headquarters. Another great thing that we were able to do with bond interest because schools had delayed their project before interest rate declined, we were able to utilize our bond interest to actually purchase a records management system for the police department as well as replace the MDTs for the fire department. Do y'all have any questions on those projects? Couple of exciting things, I know this is dear to everybody's heart, is the sidewalk and crosswalk at Picocin Avenue. We issued our request for proposals. We have the bids in, they've been open. We had one successful bidder. Staff is currently reviewing the bids to make sure they meet all the qualifications and we're waiting for VDOT's approval. If so, we hope on the March 22nd, we authorize the city manager to enter and contract with that bidder. So hopefully in the next few weeks, you'll see movement on that. And then one last thing, and again, I know Mr. Dever will appreciate this, we were able with our fund balance to get body worn cameras for the police department. Do y'all have any questions? It's always a good story within a pandemic that you can bring good news to y'all that we're actually spending money to make a difference, both for employees as well as our citizens. Couple of things I'd just like to walk you through that's in your package. Some of the recommendations that the city manager has put forth, again, it's all constrained on funding. Right now with the middle school funding, we have a little bit of what we call the credit card, the city's limit, which is our credit card. However, we're holding that for any future projects. More than likely, we won't have a borrowing in anytime soon. But a couple of things that we find are important are the life replacement for the fire department. Now I'm just going to kind of run through kind of just a few little items. As well as the structure system, a while back, we got a new ambulance that had the nice structure system. It is a request the fire department to try to outfit all the ambulance with that same system. And of course, you've got some medic trucks and fire trucks coming down to play as well. Couple of big ticket items, you know, street paving is our normal occurrence that we get state money. But at the bottom of transportation, you have sidewalk connector. That's actually phase two of the sidewalks. That's one of the things that city council has asked us to proceed with and look into. So we are trying to do funding in this year's budget to accommodate it. So you have phase one, which is the VDOT money that you'll see working too. Phase two will happen after the completion of that one. At the bottom, you'll see recreations and events. Those two items are something that are in our MIP, MIP that we're trying to put forth. One of them is inspecting our peers in both ways to make sure they're safe and any recommendation from a structural engineer or marine engineer will be provided, as well as first field improvements. It's been requested that the chain link fence be expanded out, and so we're hoping to get that in to make it better for all who use it. Any questions on that? And of course, with utilities, utilities is supported by revenue, so they're unique, so they have the revenue to support a lot of their CCIP, unlike the other projects where we either A, have to have general fund support, which comes from tax dollars, or receive bond funding. The sewer fund actually gets paid by the sewer fees that are received from each month. Couple of the upgrades for the sewer are ongoing pump station equipment and of course, repair to their software system, which is called SCADA, and then of course, updating their buildings and generators to make sure those operations stay efficient. Down at the bottom, in 2024, it'll be the Victory Boulevard, that'll be a state project that we hope to bring on. Okay. So that's kind of ended my presentation. So I'll open up for any questions concerned as you had with the CCIP, has it been recommended to you?
I have a question. Last year, when this was presented to us, the former superintendent of schools indicated that the primary school roof was going to be replaced. Could you address that, please?
Absolutely. So one of the things the school had provided was, we told them how much they would receive in debt funding, and they were going to go forth and do various projects. Their hopes is to have a partnership with a solar panel group that'll actually replace the primary school roof and put solar panels so they can reuse that energies in future savings. So it's still a consideration both for the high school and the primary school.
So will the, will the roof be replaced in order to accommodate the solar panels?
Yes.
So it'll be one turnkey?
Correct.
Project?
That's the attraction with the, the collaboration with the group is that they, they appease you by saying, we're going to replace the roof if you put the solar panels on top.
And the cost savings of power would come back to the city?
Eventually it would. Of course, they're going to have to pay for the roof, so part of that agreement with the cost saving actually pays for the roof, and then eventually, as it goes through, the cost savings will come back, it'll actually go to the schools because the school pays for their power.
I believe the HVAC system did get replaced or not?
The, the high school HVAC system did get repl, it actually was brand new. So the HVACs in the high school was a brand new unit that they've been requiring.
And what about the primary school?
That has been replaced. That was actually almost, almost a year and a half, two years ago.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, it was sort of on the borderline there.
With the middle school renovations, the construction costs have continued to go up. Is the $20 million finite in the contract with the builder, or is that on a sliding scale with building materials?
It is finite. They have actually have gone, locked into an agreement with the builder. So part of the architects, the engineer architects commitment was figuring out the cost. That's why when they put it out for bid, it was actually closed in January, so the builder probably took all that into consideration when they put the bid out.
Question. So the city manager recommendations, they're not, are these recommendations also line items in the CCIP? So I was looking at, for instance, the recreation and events projects and the city manager recommendation projects, I don't necessarily see outlined.
So because of their thresholds, they're less than 50,000, so they're actually in the appendix at the back of the document. So if you actually flip to the last page, that's probably the last thing that we speak about is the Parks and Rec.
And then, so not necessarily the, the line items in the, or the projects in the CCIP that are listed as fiscal year 22 in the CCIP, they're not, they're not necessarily going to be recommended.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
In order to recommend them, there would be potential tax increases and they're not, I don't believe city council is willing to do that at this time.
Comments?
I was, I guess I was really excited to see that we were going to be doing a watershed study. I know it's, it's sort of only funded for 60,000 in the next, the next fiscal year, but I think we all need to be, I guess, starting to be a little aware of, of what increased flooding is going to be, do to Picocin and as to how we're going to mitigate that as a citywide project. So it was really, I was really pleased to see this drainage study going forward now so that we will have the data and the statistics so that then we can start planning ahead of time. As you know, I, I live down on the eastern part of the city, and we've got an increase in, in housing development that's going on. The latest information I have from National Mortgage is that mortgage companies are probably not going to be loaning to folks in a flood, flood saint very much longer. I think it's like a three year ago. And the fiscal impact of that to the city of Picocin would be. The data now as to how, how it will affect the city and, and going forward, if we can find our way out of it, so to speak.
Absolutely. And you're correct, when it comes to insurance, like State Farm currently does not provide flood insurance if you live in the city of Picocin. If you're a current, if you're a current participant with State Farm, you can continue, but if you move new into Picocin and you require flood insurance, State Farm will not issue the policy. And then the watershed study is something that we identified in the MIP as well, so that's why it's important to bring it forward.
The master infrastructure plan, is that available on the city website?
It is not currently, but I can work with staff to produce a PDF copy that we could probably put it on the city website.
One more question that I have, I was just, I know that the traffic signal at Withcrey Victory, that was one of them from last year. We were given a status update, which, thank you so much for all the status updates on them. That's very helpful. And I do see that there's ongoing signal support. Is that for other upgrades?
That's correct. So the project at the Withcrey Signal Upgrade, that should be completed by May, based on the contractor's timeline, so hopefully that'll be complete. But the city engineer had identified other things that need to start happening throughout the city to make sure our signals are equipped to handle going forward. So yes, it's other projects that have been identified.
Comments?
I just had a question on the, the City Hall Park project. I guess that sort of appeared out of somewhere. I didn't see it in any prior IP.
So you're referring to like the dog park?
Ah.
That is something that the Parks and Rec Board is looking into, that's something that they're striving to bring to the city, more of recreational here at City Hall. And so that's a request that the Parks and Rec Department put forth on behalf of the Parks Board.
Ah, I, I guess I, you know, being part of the citizen input for our comprehensive plan, the need for a western district park to have a high priority among the citizens, and I, I guess I, you know, this sort of took me by surprise in that. You know, the CIP, the comprehensive plan didn't really address anything in, right in the central business district. Legacy obviously has its own recreational of their development with their clubhouse and pool and that type of thing. So yeah, I, how that got prioritized into, you know, being a need.
Well, I can circle back with the Parks Board and relay that question and try to get back with you on that.
To clarify that though, that is not one of the recommendations at this time, so possibly in the future.
Possibly in the future.
Excited to see the sidewalk project.
The city manager and myself knew that that was something that y'all would definitely be excited for. I actually left it out of my slide, and he said, nope, gotta put that in.
Yeah, we've been talking about this.
The sidewalk.
Well, phase two, it takes it a little bit further down Cedar, so it actually connects the middle school portion to the high school at that point.
Well, thank you so much.
No, thank y'all so much for your time. I'll get back to you on that one question. If y'all think of anything else, I'll be around afterwards. Thank you.
Next on our agenda for the work session is an update on amendment to Article 1 of the zoning ordinance regarding the definition of farmers markets and open air markets.
Okay, awesome. So remember our last work session, we talked about possibly redefining farmers markets. A farm definition is rather restrictive and specific as to what a farmer's market is, and it does not really encompass our existing farmer market here. Also, we do not define flea markets, yet somehow allow them in our zoning ordinance, something to do about that. Thank you for the feedback from that work session, that was very helpful. Before you is a proposed series of changes to our zoning ordinance. The first one would be in section 1-3, which is definition. What I am proposing is that we strike the definition of farmer's market that we currently have and replace it with the definition of open air market. And this includes language from our neighbors in York, Gloucester, and James City Counties. I can read it out now. An open air market would be an occasional or periodic market where temporary stalls or tables are erected in an open area and where one or more individuals offer goods for sale to the public, including farmed produce, seafood, handicrafts, antiques, and other retail goods. This definition shall not be construed to include sidewalk sales by retail merchants, bake sales, or garage or yard sales held in conjunction with an incidental residential uses, or sponsored and conducted by religious, civic, or charitable organizations on their property. So, sort of a mouthful, but it's more general definition than some of our neighbors, hopefully encompasses the existing farmer's market. With this definition change, I would also suggest two small changes to section 10-2, which is the permitted and conditional uses for our B2 business district. In section B, I would simply cross out flea markets and replace it with open air markets, meaning that open air markets would be permitted as a conditional use in the B2 district. And in section A, which is permitted by right uses, currently we allow the outdoor display and sale of seasonal items when they are deemed accessory use to a primary commercial use. This is the clause that allows McDonald's Garden Center to exist in the shopping center. It is also allowed as a primary use by a nonprofit civic group or by a farmer's market. I would cross out farmer's market, is that with farmer's fruit or produce stand. They're not defining what a farmer's market is specifically with these ordinance changes. I would simply make that word change just to kind of clarify what we mean in the existing language.
So cheerleaders can still sell bonuts in front of pit line?
The idea is that you can allow, you know, someone to sell seasonal items like a produce stand or some sort of small charitable event, but in terms of a large use like the current farmer's market, which could involve a lot of vehicle traffic and a lot of setting up and taking down, that would be better suited as a conditional use to go through the use permit process.
Dan, do you think that this expanded language will increase the timeframe that the market could be opened? The gentleman said it was like more of a seasonal market based on produce, I guess. So by opening this up, does this potentially have a longer season?
I don't believe it, it impacts the timeframe at all. It's not really mentioned in there, and I don't think it's covered in their conditional use permit either. Since it would be allowed as a conditional use, that would be up to the city council and the planning commission if another farmer's market were to be proposed, if we wanted to put a timeframe on there. But I believe currently they are limited to one sale a week, one day a week, but there is no seasonal limit on their operation.
It's worth while to point out that in our definition of open air market, we call it an occasional or periodic, periodic, temporary stalls or tables erected in an open area. So I think Dan is absolutely correct. We'll just.
The reason why I bring that up is we all see the impact of the seafood festival on the, on the schools grounds, on the playing fields, where we have huge volume of people over like a three per, a three day period. I just would question if we have a temporary situation where we have, we attract a lot of people once a week, oh, like improvements on the grass area or whatever, is that, that a potential problem, I guess?
It could be, and there is language in the existing farmer's markets conditional use permit that the conditions could be changed at any time by city council. So if we were finding that it was really messing up Victory Boulevard, the traffic was becoming a problem, or there was damage to properties in that area, we could go in and impose conditions to limit the operation. But considering we've only had one farmer's market within at least the five years that I've been here, it seems that going through the whole process of, you know, specifically putting standards for that in the zoning ordinance would kind of be just not needed at this time.
You better go and wait and see.
Yeah. Unless, yeah, a bunch of farmer's markets, it seems like we could handle addressing this on a case by case basis. I will also mention that if you were to recommend this language, I would go and get in touch with Victory Church, and if we were passing this language, I would also want to include an amendment to the use permit, basically changing farmer's mark, near market. So it's a one word change, wouldn't cost anything, we would just need their permission to make that change.
I understand. And I think you've done a good job. Not way to go.
This is all the concerns of the prior work session.
So then, Dan, would this go before, before the planning commission, then next session for a public hearing?
Objections, I guess we could bring it to planning commission at the next regular session, which would be in April. And I guess I'll also include that one word change to the CUP, we would bring that to planning commission and council at the same time.
If no other comments, we will move on to discussion item three, the further discussion of possible code amendments.
Maybe situation's not the right word, but we've, we've got an issue with our planned open space.
Wally, could you put the microphone close to the mic? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry about that. We have been discussing some of the provisions, buffer provisions, namely our planned open space section of our ordinance, and I did not realize we were going to get this far along tonight, so forgive me for not having text in front of you. We can remedy that very easily at the next, at the next work session. You're passing out?
I didn't think we would get this far, but we did.
No, I didn't think we would either. You're passing out, you say?
Yeah, just the change that we talked about.
Okay, yeah, the, the change would essentially require the same amount of open space, which is 50%, but the way it's distributed over the entire property would be different. You would not, you would no longer have a 40-foot buffer next to residential or 100-foot buffer next to commercial. What we have found over the last year or so, I would guess, is that this buffer requirement is, is quite an impediment to people being able to take advantage of this planned open space provisions that we have. So we've got a recommendation, I'm not asking you for any determination tonight, it's something that we probably need to discuss further, because I feel like I'm springing this on you out of nowhere, but, but take a look at what Dan's got written, and we can certainly, you know, discuss in more detail next time. In the meantime, I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Mind emailing that to everyone, too? Thank you.
Absolutely. The open space subdivision is something in our code that allows developers to build smaller lots, more compact developments, provided they preserve half of the area as open space. And you can include wetlands and drainage infrastructure in that open space, so it's somewhat popular that developers have used in the past couple decades. But the one provision which before you is that there is a minimum boundary buffer of 40 feet from adjacent residential and 100 feet from adjacent commercial. And what this usually looks like in the developments that we have is you have a property, there's a cul-de-sac going down it, there's lots around it, and then there's a buffer that goes around this cul-de-sac, kind of this rectangular, you know, strips of land that encompass that, that road of development. And what we have found, working with, with two different proposals in the last couple months, is that we have some smaller, more irregularly shaped areas of, assemblages of property that people would like to develop using open space. However, because there's, you know, weird parts of it that are too narrow, or there's additional, you know, lots that have already been cut out of it, the buffer requirement is really making it difficult to try and work that around. We actually have one developer who's going to the Board of Zoning Appeals, probably in April, to get a modification from that buffer, from the requirements of the zoning ordinance for that. So rather than having to do that, we would like to, you know, put this out there for your consideration, that we make this change and basically change buffer requirement into a setback requirement, which functionally means that the development would look pretty much the same instead of having 40 feet between your lot and the adjacent properties, you would just have a 40-foot set back. would just have a 40-foot setback. Again, 50, 50% of the open space would be preserved. A side benefit of this would be that instead of those long strips of buffer, which are really not useful for anything, the only real use that developers have found is to put like drainage swales on them. Instead, that open space could kind of be consolidated together into a larger group of trees or open space or something like that.
I have a question. The legacy is a PUD, right? It's a plan unit development.
Yes.
What is the POS CD? Do we have one that I'm aware of?
Yeah, it's the planned open space. It's also overlay district, so that's part of the zoning ordinance. It's not part of subdivision regulations, but it's something that developers could develop, a five acres or more. So it's kind of a separate thing from our existing subdivision ordinance, and we have a couple. Drake's Landing is an open space. That one off of Pat's Street, I'm forgetting.
I know Victory Cove is one. That's all of them.
Victory Cove is one, and we've maybe...
We did Quarter Creek, which was...
These are newer, these are newer, these are newer sections where they're putting multiple homes in, they're setting aside some of the acreage so that they can cluster the homes.
Exactly, exactly. They get, they can put more density, they can have smaller lots, and that's what they put aside the open space. And I think Dan had hit the point real well, but I do think the open space, if we consolidated it all without worrying about the buffers, I think it would be more usable by the residents because it would, you know, instead of these 40-foot strips where people may, you know, the impression of the property owner who has the 40-foot that's running behind them is that they're going to feel more threatened by somebody coming back there, or people are going to be less likely to use that open space if it's within a 40-foot buffer than if it was all consolidated.
So can you explain to me again how this new proposal would work, say, for instance, in Victory Cove? Because I live at, you know, I drive through that every day, and I guess one thing that I have noticed, and I've been in the real estate industry all my life, is that the houses sit almost on the road, and all of the open space is around the project as opposed to in the project, if you will. And so what I have seen is no one uses the open space. Everyone is fenced in there a lot, and the open space just, just lays there. I mean, the kids don't play in it, they play in the road. And, and so that would be my only concern with open spaces, that I, I think in that situation, that the houses are set too close to the highway, to the road, and then you have all this open space that's just not being used. So if, to me, somehow it could be incorporated to the front and the rear or in some manner, because, I mean...
That's really what we're talking about.
Is that, is that what this means? Is that what you're saying?
Currently, open space developments must maintain a 20-foot front setback, 10-foot side setbacks, and then there is no rear setback, because it's expected that there would be a 40-foot buffer area. But as you said, we have not had a developer who has put anything in those, those 40-foot buffer stretches going down the sides of these developments. The most creative use was drainage swales, so it's just grass, and then there's a swale. It's not really recreational infrastructure doing anything. So basically, that, the, you know, the character of the development basically stayed the same, because instead of a 40-foot buffer in the rear of your property, which is managed by an HOA, there would just be a 40-foot setback.
And rear or side or...
Rear setback.
Just rear.
A rear setback.
Right, and the other setbacks would not change.
So in Victory Cove, what is the setback from the road, from the property line in there?
Well, because it's an open space development.
I'm sorry?
Because it's open space development, I'm sorry. Because it's a open space development, be 20 feet from the road right away.
How many?
20.
20?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's about it.
That's why you see them as close as you see them.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't think that is, well, I don't think, it's, it's a nice neighborhood, and it's a pretty neighborhood, but it doesn't allow children much room to play. There's nowhere to play, because they have virtually no front yard, and the only place they typically play is in the front row, is in the, is in the street. And it is a neighborhood that is full of children. So I don't know, I would just like to see something a little different there in the open, I'm not supposed to open space, I think it's a, it's a great concept, but in that particular case, and it may be the only one of the open spaces that are like that, I'm not sure, I do think that, that could use some tweaking there.
I understand. Keep in mind, we've got to be able to give some incentive for people doing the...
I'm sorry, I can't understand what you're saying.
We've got to be able to do some sort of incentive for people to do the planned open space development, and that's one of the incentives. Not only do they have a density, extra density, but they are able to locate their homes closer than perhaps in a conventional subdivision they would have to do. I think our setback there is basically 30 feet from the right away. So they do get a 10-foot break.
So there will still be 20 feet to the, is that what I mean, regardless?
Well, it'd be 20 feet, and of course, as the planning commission, if y'all want to recommend something else different, we'll certainly go along with that. But I'm just trying to explain to you the reason we have the 20-foot in there. All of it is as an enticement, because we really want to see more open space developments versus, versus your typical cookie cutter type subdivisions. We want to see open space preserved, you know, and we want to see it used, which is, seems to be, you know, the problem with Victory Cove is maybe they're not using open space at all.
Well, it's not. It's not used at all, and there's no, there's nothing there but grass and weeds. I mean, so, I mean, it doesn't affect me, other than just I drive through it and I look at it, and I think this could have been so much nicer, it could have had a much nicer layout where you had an open space for children to go and play. There's one little recreation area at the end of the cul-de-sac with a couple of, I don't know, outdoor playground equipment, but for the most part, they're all in, they're all in the street. And I think that it's a, it creates a dangerous situation. We all drive 25 miles an hour or less in and out of there, but even at 25 miles an hour, you know, a, a child runs out in front of a 25 mile an hour car moving, it's still not a good situation. So to me, I, I, I just, I don't know, I, I, I don't think that is a good precedent to continue to follow, and if any of you ride down Victory Cove on Saturday, or Sunday, or after school hours, you'll see exactly what I mean. I mean, that development probably, I would say 95% of the houses in there have children, and they're young children, they're not older children that are out in the middle of the road.
Absolutely.
So it seems to me, what is the regular setback for...
I'm really ballparking here, but 30 feet typically is what you look at from the edge of a right away from the front.
I mean, if you ride around the coast, and I, I think most homes are setback even further than 30 feet. Am I wrong about that? I mean, I, it just seems to me...
Well, from the right away of the road. Remember, the right away may extend far beyond where the actual road is.
Okay, okay. I'm just thinking of the more conventional subdivisions, they don't seem to be on top of one another, and I think that that is just not a good practice personally.
Well, part of that is due to the clustering, I, I hear you on the setback. Our, our intention in doing this change would be partly to make the open space more usable than it currently is, such as backyards that you, you pointed out.
Really, the front yard, in this case, that would have been more appropriate to have that open space in the front yards than in the rear yards, because that's where all the kids congregate and play. So, you know, you've got virtually a 40-foot strip around the back that isn't used at all.
Right, and that's what we're trying to get at here. Now, you know, in the course of this change, the planning commission may want to look at recreational, you know, some of our requirements we have for recreational, because we almost always come to the point in these open space developments where we talk about active recreation versus passive recreation. Active recreation is, is something like a swing set or, or a, a basketball court. Passive is more like hiking or, or picnicking area of things of that nature. So, you know, we, we might want to think about that a little bit, too. I mean, if you want to get your kids out in the yard.
The front yard is one thing, but if we're proposing a 40-foot rear setback, I think that's probably the, the largest rear setback in the city. And that was to preserve basically the intent of this ordinance to have a space between this more dense development and the neighboring developments, which are presumably not open space, that they're on larger lots. But that would give these developments, instead of having a small backyard and then a 40-foot strip of grass that they don't own behind their property, they would have at least 40 feet of rear yard among their neighbors, and that may be a decent incentive for people living there to place for recreation, accessory structures and the like.
I guess 40-foot in the rear yard, if you're backing up your neighbor, means something, but if you're just a one-street subdivision where there is no close neighborhood, you know, it, it, it's just been from, from observation, it's gone totally unused, whatever that requirement was, and I have no idea what the requirement was behind there, but it's not used at all.
I think Dan makes a real good point. If you got rid of the 40-foot buffer in the rear of the property, so that 40-foot setback, that would actually be part of somebody's property and not part of the open space anymore. So you would actually have more recreational area for the kids to play in the backyard versus playing in the front yard. That's sort of what he's getting at there.
There's just not a lot of stuff you could put in a 40-foot strip of grass in terms of recreational, that's behind people's backyards that we've seen.
In terms of the, the, not, not a subdivision, which you're talking about here, is the, the infill with the non-conforming lots that we're seeing take place throughout the town. I'm going through a little bit of a rehabilitation in some of the older homes and with some being torn down and rebuilt new, which is, which is great in some cases, but also the non-conforming lots in terms of the setbacks and the vegetation requirements. Is, is there any thought in those situations? Because we do have a lot of potentially non-conforming lots that could be coming online pretty quickly.
Non-conforming lots are actually legal lots. If, if they are actually non-conforming.
Say that again?
Non-conforming lots are legal lots. Like if you had a subdivision that came along, let's say 1965, I'm just picking a date, and you got, you know, 10,000 or 15,000 square foot lots, they are legal lots, because they predated any zoning ordinance requirement we had, unless, unless certain situations exist, one of them being it's been vacant for more than two years. But, but even then, that's not really a lot issue, that's more of a, a structure issue.
Non-conforming lots, which are undeveloped, are required to obey our minimum setbacks. The only way around that would be going to the board of zoning appeals.
It would have to be.
As for reconstruction of homes, we allow that by right, but that's just part of our zoning ordinance. Have a house that is non-conforming in terms of setbacks and it is rebuilt, then it has to, it can maintain those setbacks, but it can make many worse.
It can maintain, yeah. You can enlarge non-conforming.
Correct.
Yeah.
But there's, there's no, there's, what are the landscaping requirements for, if you do build on a...
Same as landscaping requirements for every other development subdivision.
Maybe I didn't say that right. If you have a non-conforming lot, it's okay from the standpoint of a subdivision. That does not mean that they're not the zoning requirements in terms of setbacks, and if we have landscaping requirements, that would be part of what's involved there also. But, but each case of non-conformance is, is a little bit different, and there's, there's no two, there's no one-size-fits-all. I mean, you know, you just have to kind of take them one at a time. I mean, certainly we'll, we'll do the best we can to enforce the zoning ordinances, but as Dan pointed out, there are times when they'll have to apply for variance, and they'd probably have a pretty good shot at getting one. I mean, you can't deny all economic use of a property.
And Molly, for the planned open space, that's an overlay, right?
It is an overlay of our residential districts, RSR1 and R2.
And is that something that the city, I don't want to say promotes, but is that something that planners, that you prefer to see this sort of district in areas to where you can cluster the homes and have more, you have a particular vision of what it ought to look like?
Yeah. Certainly something that the city encourages.
Okay, it does encourage. And is that the density to bring in different incomes and shorter homes and things like that, or...
Well, it can be, like Victory Cove is an example that would not fit that criteria, because all the houses are fairly large. So, you know, it's really up to the developer to decide what the market will bear for whatever he or she is building.
Does the city encourage it for environment? But why does the city encourage that?
There's two...
Go ahead.
Well, there's two big reasons that developers liked open space. Among a couple, one was consolidation of drainage infrastructure. There are a lot of drainage issues in the city, and so big subdivisions usually require BMPs, swales, and all of that could be put in an open space area under common ownership of an HOA, which makes it easy for them. The other reason is environmental and wetlands preservation. The Quarter Creek development of Robert Bruce is a very good example of that. There is a whole bunch of wetlands titled to the south of that property, and all of it was able to be incorporated as open space. And for doing that and keeping that area undisturbed, they were able to plan out a development at a higher density to the north.
If they, if we do go towards setbacks versus a buffer, would that affect BMPs?
It shouldn't. I mean, the one disadvantage would be if they wanted to, again, put swales behind everyone's property, but then there's nothing stopping them from not putting a buffer in. It's simply not required anymore.
I have a question, and that is where are these measurements taken place from? I've seen things where they say from the middle of the street to the curb to, there's a 10-foot buffer for utilities. Where does the 20 feet start for the setback?
The right away of the street that serves the property.
So it's from the, where the street starts?
Where the right away starts, which might be bigger than the street.
Yeah, yeah, you might have a five or 10-foot, like for existence, like sidewalks, et cetera. So it's 20 feet from there to the front door. So you could potentially, like in, in my neighborhood, I know there's a 10-foot setback, so I could have, instead of 20 feet to the front door, I really have 30 feet if they don't put a sidewalk in there, or, or what.
Are you in an open space development? Do you live there? Because if you don't, the setback's going to be greater than 20 feet.
It is.
Is there any interest in, in talking about this specific change?
Yeah, we'd obviously get you to text the ordinance and what we're talking about. We've got you at a bit of a disadvantage, Dan, and I'm sorry. As Dan said, we didn't think we were going to get this far.
But this is not, you know, this is kind of our first draft idea of something that we thought might be a good idea in the future, if these issues kind of keep coming up with developers in the future, so...
I know, I would be really interested in seeing a map of where the overlays are and looking at it.
I would like that, like take Victory Cove as an example and show us what it is today and what it would look like under the... and what it would look like under this proposal, and maybe take another one, Drake Landing you're talking about, and see, just to get a sense and a visual sense of what it looks like.
I think that's a great idea. We can certainly do that. Just, just to point out, under the, uh, the rubric of further discussion of possible code amendments, I did hand out some planning development literature last, uh, meeting. We probably don't have a lot of time to get into it tonight, seeing as how it's 10 of 7, but, uh, we've got a rather aggressive schedule for the rest of the year. We'll probably be having work sessions.
What was that? We have a heavy work, we have a...
Heavy list of things to, to look at, uh, so we'll probably be having pretty regular work sessions for a period on that. Now that code is, hopefully, hopefully, starting to go away anyway. I say starting, because it's still here.
Is the heavy list, uh, heavy list, is that mostly just updates and things like that?
Well, we need to tackle the planning development ordinances, which we've talked about before. And we also have some overarching, uh, things that need to be addressed in our subdivision ordinance, our zoning ordinance, and our site plan ordinance. So there's no shortage of things to talk about, I guess is what I'm trying to say. We'll do the planning and development next.
Thank you. We have a few minutes until our regular meeting, so thank you.
Please. Where did you hear this about lending?
Yes, but lending, I have never heard that.
I'm so mad you're so hardworking. I told you to stop.